Good afternoon. It is 3:00 PM and I'll call to order the Board of Directors' regular meeting study session for Thursday, September 11th, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
Director Meyer Hoffman.
Here.
Director Duff.
Present.
Director Martin.
Present.
Vice President Griffith.
Present.
And President Sewell.
Here.
Thank you. We have Chrome.
Okay. And before we get started, I do want to do a moment of silence. Twenty-four years ago today was the attacks on September 11th, and we'll be honoring all those that lost their lives. Thank you. Item three, announcement of remote meeting participation. We can skip. Item four, Pledge of Allegiance, will do on Monday. Item five, Rules of Procedure. Counselor?
Yes. According to the rules of procedure adopted by the Board of Directors, all noticed meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as a procedural guideline. Directors should refrain from responding directly to public comments at meetings of the Board. The President of the Board presides at all meetings and decides all points of order and procedure during meetings. The President is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all Board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the President. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the President as the Presiding Officer. No member of the Board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the Board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given an opportunity to speak. No Board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a Board meeting.
Thank you. Item six, Public Input. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the Board on matters within the Board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the Board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the Board today?
President Sewell, not online.
Okay. Seeing none here in person, we will move on. We're actually going to rearrange the agenda slightly. We're going to move up our presentations ahead of closed session, and that's item nine, Desert Hot Springs High School Real Academy Internship Program.
Thank you, President Sewell, and good afternoon, Board. I have the pleasure today to introduce to you our four Fall Real Academy interns. We're very happy to have them here with us, and we're very excited to start this new internship program. First, we have Mark, I'm gonna say it, Marusia. Can you say your name for me? Thank you. He's interning in our Field Customer Services Department. He's a senior at Desert Hot Springs High School, and he joined the Real Academy because his English teacher recommended it to him. He says he likes the people and the experiences that he's getting from it, and after graduations, he wants to go into the military to be combat support. He grew up here in Desert Hot Springs, and the military will give him the opportunity to travel. What he likes about the internship is the people he works with because they teach him a lot, but he also is learning fun things along the line. Welcome. Next, we have Christian, who's interning in our GIS department. He's also a senior at Desert Hot Springs High School, and he joined the Real Academy because his friend had recommended it to him. What he likes is that he's open to everything and all the opportunities he's getting from it. He wants to go to a trade or the military, but he's not too sure yet what he'd like to do. We are trying to push for a trade within water. He grew up in Desert Hot Springs all of his life, and he would also like to travel. What he likes about his internship is that Ryan and our GIS team, they've been teaching him a lot, and he thinks it's really cool for the things he's been learning. So welcome. Next, we have Raphael, who's interning with our wastewater team. He is also a senior at the high school. He joined because his brother was in Real Academy, and it was a huge inspiration to him. He loves all of the opportunities, and he really likes learning. He enjoys being hands-on, and after graduation, he wants to go to a trade school to become an electrician. But after working with MSWD as an intern, he's thinking about doing wastewater in the future. What he likes about his internship with MSWD is the people he works with because he likes having fun while working hard at his job. And last, we have Paulette, way at the end. She's interning in Public Affairs. She's only sixteen, but she's a senior at Desert Hot Springs, and she joined the Real Academy because she wants to do something new and something she wouldn't normally do outside of her comfort zone. She likes the academy and all the people she's met and the opportunities that have been afforded to her, and her plan after high school is to go on to Desert High Medical College to become a vet assistant. We would like to welcome all four of you with the team, and thank you very much. And April would like to take some pictures of you as well.
So before you guys leave, what was the best part of your tour yesterday? We took them on a tour yesterday of a couple of wells in the plant. What was the best part? Andy entertained you?
Yeah.
He's a-
Did you go? So they're just about to start?
Yes.
Okay. Nice. Okay. No, it's okay. I'm a little jealous. A long time ago when I was at Desert Hot Springs High School, there was no Real Academy. Enjoy it.
Remember, there's only one branch of the service, and that's the Marine Corps.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, and with that, we're going to be headed into closed session. Counselor, did you want to state the items?
Yes, we're going to be meeting in closed session on item number seven, which is Conference with Legal Counsel, Potential Litigation, One Potential Case. And then Monday, item eight will be covered in closed session.
With that, we'll head into closed session. Okay, were you reconvened from closed session? Counselor, can you report out?
Yes, the Board met in closed session. Item seven was Conference with Legal Counsel, Potential Litigation, Potential Initiational Litigation, One Potential Case. There was no reportable action. You'll have two items on your closed session, I believe, on Monday, including item number eight.
Thank you.
And Rob Cupberth from my office will be here to handle that, and so he'll just cover the meeting on Monday.
Okay. Thank you. Item ten, Human Resources Report, we will do Monday. Moving on to action items, item eleven, we'll have a public hearing on Monday, and that's Ordinance 2025-03, Updating the Rules and Regulations for Sewer Service. It is recommended that the public hearing be conducted and Ordinance 2025-03 be adopted, amending Ordinance 2008-02, Establishing Rules and Regulations for Sewer Service, Article 11 Enforcement. General Manager.
Yes, knowing that we have the public hearing on Monday, I'll just give a brief presentation of what we have. I know one of the things, when we were talking at our workshop last week, one of the things that we didn't have with us was Peter Nolan from JP's office, and there were some questions that came up regarding specific situations. And he is here today to talk about those specific situations, but I also wanted to let you know what is actually going to be in the ordinance or the revisions. What you see here in red is the revision. Again, we'll talk about this in more detail as well on Monday, but much what we were talking about, we wanted to put in some guardrails. What happens thirty days, sixty days, and then past sixty days, what you have in front of you, unless otherwise directed by General Manager, Board Action, or assigned violation by another regulatory agency such as U.S. Fish and Wildlife, California State Water Quality Control Board, et cetera. The civil penalty shall be $1,000 each day for each violation, which occurs for thirty days. If the violation continues past thirty days, the civil penalty shall increase to $5,000 per day per violation for thirty days, sixty days total. Violation continues past sixty days, the civil penalty increases to $100,000 for each day per violation. The violation continues past 120 days, will terminate wastewater or water service. And then, of course, we added a paragraph. One of the things we talked about is whose responsibility is it to contact Mission Springs and letting us know, hey, you're compliant or you're not compliant. Pete came up with this paragraph. It is the responsibility of the permit holder to notify the district. Staff immediately wants corrective action has been completed by the discharger, and the discharger believes compliance has been achieved, so it may be confirmed by the district. In the absence of such notification, the permit holder shall be deemed to be continued violation for each day between the two non-compliance sample, test samples. So I think we captured everything. No changes to this particular page. We had removed the Executive Committee last time. The questions that I believe that were talked about the most, notification requirement discharge, we covered that in that last paragraph, a negotiated agreement between MSWD and the discharger to stop the fines from continuing. I think we talked through that, that that agreement would take precedence over that, but they would continue to pay fines as we go through this process. We just would not shut them down because they are trying to take care of it. The one thing that I would ask is that Pete talk about how enforcement of a service turnoff could occur. He's had experience with this, so has JP, and I'd like him to walk through a scenario that they've actually implemented and was successful. So with that being said, can we turn, can we take the presentation down and let Pete come on and talk about how they've handled the termination of service in other jurisdictions? Pete, you there?
Absolutely. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, the key to any sort of enforcement action where we're going to be terminating service has to be based on due process and notice, right? We have to make sure that they have a notice, they have a firm shut-off date, and they're given an adequate timeframe by which they can. And in the cases that we're seeing, particularly in the cannabis cases, we're worried about their product, right? And some damage that might occur to their product if they are to lose service and potential liability that they may claim towards the district if their product is damaged as a result. So we give them plenty of time to make sure, hey, look, this is shutting off on this date, and we can schedule interim times to check on what they've done in the past, is they've moved the product, right? They've either come into compliance with the district or with the agency, or we give them time to move the product such that no damage occurs, or if damage does occur, the onus is on them. They had every opportunity to either come into compliance and avoid shut-off or to protect their product and investment by whatever means they had necessary. To cover ourselves in those events, John had some experience where we videotaped, got names, got pictures, got information as to who was removing the product, what date, at what time. We had evidence showing that they were securing the product, and at that point, responsibility falls to them. So they can't claim, look, we had product in this building, you guys shut us off, and somebody else came in and took it, right? We make sure it's their staff and their responsibility for doing that. So there are means to enforce, but our concerns is potential liability that that might come through enforcement, and not so much that we're concerned about the district being liable. As long as we follow the rules, we shouldn't be liable, but claim liability, right? They're gonna look for somebody to blame, and they're gonna file suit and try to seek damages for what they might deem inappropriate action by the district. So through due process, through notice, through posting, through ensuring an adequate timeframe by which they can comply or protect their product, and we had those discussions with them upfront. Look, this is happening. So if you're concerned about your investment, you need to take action. And then at that time, we come, we terminate, and we document the removal and the actions that they took of their product so that we, if litigation follows, we have evidence to demonstrate that we've complied with not only our own code, but the requirements of just basic due process and fairness.
Okay. Thanks, Pete. Do you have it? I guess at this point, I'll open up for any questions for the Board regarding this item. Knowing that we do have a public hearing, you'll see a very similar presentation, and Pete will be there as well. But if there's any questions today, Pete and I, JP, will be able to answer them today.
And, you know, if there is a situation where we're shutting off service, we'll be involved in that. We'll be working with staff, and we just successfully completed one. So we'll make sure that we take every step that we can possibly take to mitigate risk to the district. There's a right way to do it, and we've got experience doing it, so.
Would you please clarify when you said we successfully completed one that wasn't here with?
No, that was not here in Mission Springs.
Thank you.
For another agency.
Director Martin, any questions or comments? Director Meyer? Director Duff?
Just thank you for all your work. Appreciate it.
Vice President?
Not for Mr. Nolan. I just have a question about the notice that went out, which states what the original fines would be, and we are changing them. Does that need to be re-noticed?
So for the existing, the existing folks that are, that are out of compliance right now, we told, so when we met, when we first talked about this item, I believe it was at our, it was a closed session item that we had a discussion, and we were given direction that we wanted to go a little bit more heavier enforcement. And after that meeting, our staff reached out to those folks and said, oh, by the way, the fines are going to be going up from 1,000 to 5,000. They had gone long past, if you will, what this order talks about. We could have gone up to 10,000 immediately, so we are increasing those to 5,000. That 5,000 actually starts on Monday after this ordinance gets passed.
Talking about this notice.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the notice it was in the, I guess, the desert sun. I'm not sure.
To have the public hearing.
Public hearing, and it states the penalties are structured to increase 1,000 per day for the first ninety days, 5,000 for the next, 10,000 after 120. And since we're changing that, do we need to re-notice?
I thought that was worth it.
No.
I think because, I think we posted it before our workshop because we had to post it. So I believe we did modify that after the fact, but only a slight modification.
I'm not sure what the modification is. I'm looking, and it's 1,000.
Now, it's 1,000 for thirty days, 5,000 after thirty days, up to sixty days. At sixty days, it's 10,000.
You can modify, you can modify the ordinance, and then what we can do is have it come back for a second reading and approve it at the second hearing. But it was modified, it was modified after the notice, right? So we may want to come back for a second reading to approve it a second.
Okay, just.
And the second reading can be done on the consent calendar, the approval, because we're having the public hearing on Monday, right?
Correct.
Correct. So we're gonna do the public hearing, and then we can bring it back for a second reading at the next meeting as part of the consent calendar.
Okay. But yeah, I thank you for that clarification because there was a slight change to it, and I didn't realize it would impact. So yes, we will bring it back in consent calendar in October. Thank you.
And, you know, even if you have, yeah, that's probably the right way to do it.
All right. Thank you. Item twelve is Award of Contract for the Construction of the Horton Monitoring Well 1A Project. It is recommended to authorize the General Manager to award a contract for the construction of the Horton Monitoring Well 1A Project to ABC Leovin Drilling Incorporated, the lowest responsible bidder, in the amount of $156,050 plus a 10% contingency, for a total of $171,655, and augment capital job number 11885 by $78,300, for a total project budget of $222,970, and do all things necessary to complete the project. General Manager.
Thank you, President Sewell. I'll ask our Engineering Manager, Eric Weck, to take this and give a short presentation. Eric?
Yes. Thank you, General Manager Macy. Good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the Board. Item thirteen of this afternoon's agenda pertains to the district soliciting and receiving construction bids for a new monitoring well to be located on district property. The purpose of constructing this monitoring well 1A, as it's identified, is to replace an existing monitoring well 1, which is currently located at the district's corporate yard and will need to be replaced due to future critical, due to the future Critical Services Center. Likewise, the existing well has, has shown that it may not accurately represent ambient background groundwater conditions such as nitrogen data used to track groundwater quality. So in August 21st, the district received three bids, and after reviewing the apparent lowest bidder, from, which was identified as Yellow Jacket, it was found that they did not submit as part of their initial bid package, bid proposal, acknowledgement of the three addenda that were issued, as well as labor code certifications, et cetera. Staff then reviewed the bid from ABC Leovin Drilling and found that all of the necessary bid documents were uploaded and included, and staff would recommend awarding this project to ABC Leovin Drilling Incorporated. Finally, the new monitoring well will be sited on district property, and there is an existing monitoring well already on site. However, it is unusable and is shallow and periodically goes dry, which limits the ability to take groundwater samples. The bid from ABC Leovin Drilling Services includes abandonment of that existing well. The contract time is expected to be forty-five calendar days. Surrounding property owners will be notified of the work. Contractors' working hours will be from 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM, Mondays through Fridays, which meets the city's ordinances. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Eric. Any questions, Director Duff? Vice President? Director Martin? Director Meyer? I have nothing further. Thank you for the presentation. Item thirteen is Award of Contract to Kyle Groundwater Incorporated for Professional Hydrogeological Support Services. It is recommended to authorize the General Manager to execute an agreement with Kyle Groundwater for Professional Hydrogeological Support Services related to the assessment and rehabilitation of wells 28 and 30, and the preparation of a drinking water source assessment and protection DW SAP document for well 42, for not to exceed amount of $21,387, and to do all things necessary to complete the project. General Manager.
Thank you, President Sewell, members of the Board. I'll ask our Director of Operations, Danny Friend, to provide a short summary of the project. Danny?
Thank you, General Manager Macy. Good afternoon, President Sewell, members of the Board. This item actually started back, previous discussions with the Board as a first phase or the phase one of our Chrome Six Compliance Plan, going back to when we started preparing the 2026 fiscal year budget last April. We, okay, I'm sorry. We put this project forward, knowing that both well 28 and 30 have been offline for several years due to mechanical failure. So one of the things that we did is we put it in the budget. The budget was approved for both those capital items. The project itself, the contract amount itself, doesn't exceed the general, it doesn't exceed the approval limit of the General Manager. However, for the current permit policy, we have two other contract instruments this fiscal year that exceed that. So we have been working with Kyle Groundwater since 2022. The current contract that's in place is to develop a well rehabilitation prioritization program. And we have amended that contract. We amended it to do the well, to do a well 29 and 37 do-sop, or the drinking water source assessment. So one of the reasons why we didn't add this is because when we put that contract together, we never contemplated looking at 28 and 30. So we did a separate contract. So what they're gonna do is going to analyze the downhole video and analyze the, what they call the EMDS, the study, basically the study they use for the thickness of the casing. Based off of that, they determined that, yes, this well, these wells are rehabable. So they'll be putting together a work plan. So the next steps after that is complete the project, develop, take that development plan, work plan, put it into a set of bid documents, and then we'll be bringing this back to the Board, hopefully to award contract to do the rehab on these projects. A little bit about the contracts that are in place, just in case we're asking. We currently have the well rehab rehabilitation, and we also have a well 35 hydrologic services. They are monitoring the rehab of well 35, which is the well that's over by the Skyborne Development. We're bringing that project to completion, and we'll take the results of that rehab as well, incorporate them into the design documents so that we can bid that. Fortunately, that well 35 project also includes the source water assessment. And for those that don't understand, we're 100% groundwater. We're under the groundwater rule, and one of the requirements when you get ready to do a permit, which we'll do for 42, 35, is we have to do a source water assessment. And so what they essentially do is they want to monitor our groundwater. What they'll do is essentially delineate an area, and they'll take an inventory of any contaminating sources or activities. Fortunately, we don't have those, but there's still a requirement. So I had the opportunity to add that to this, since well 42 is hopefully going to be completed in February, March of 2026. Sorry. I had a funny thought. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Director? Director Meyer? Director Duff?
Is this the project that you were excited to bring us, or do we have another one coming too?
I'm always excited.
Okay. So- Glass half-full.
Glass half-full. I'm always excited. So I'm excited to see this. You know, the bigger thing for this project is the operational flexibility that it's going to give the district. So, yes, we've got some wells purposely taken offline as a strategy, and we've been very successful. But if we had a hiccup in the system, it may not be the case. So I'm excited about this. Staff's excited about that. So I'd like to see this be completed, get over to engineering, get out to bid. So, yes, so I believe you might be talking about something that General Manager Macy perhaps is going to talk about in his General Manager report that I have added to the agenda for Monday.
That might be it.
So I'm excited about that as well.
I'm excited about this one, too.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Really glad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President? And I have nothing further. Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Moving on to discussion items. Item fourteen, Administrative Building Update.
Just very quickly, we are still working with the city to go through the final review comments of Park Lane and things of that nature. So really, that's the only update at this point. If anything does come up that would require us to change the plans in any fashion whatsoever, we'll make sure to bring the Board up to speed immediately.
Okay, good. Item fifteen, Groundwater Protection Program Update.
Thank you, President Sewell. Yes, Eric Weck, our Engineering Manager, has a short presentation. Eric?
Yes. Thank you, General Manager Macy, and good afternoon, President Sewell, members of the Board. This month's Groundwater Protection Program update is relatively light in that the new Nancy Wright Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility has been continuing to operate as designed. The conveyance line is working well with the regional plant, and staff is continuing to coordinate with the contractor to start work on the diversion structure and working through some delays on log lead items. Finally, staff is working with legal counsel to select a contractor and is also actively working with the state on funding the project. This concludes the monthly update for the Groundwater Quality Protection Program. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Eric. Director Martin? Director Meyer? Director Duff? Vice President?
This is for you. Any updates from Sacramento?
Actually, the first phase of what we were talking with Sacramento was to select a contractor. There was a protest we've talked about, and we're still working with legal counsel through that issue, but they are working in the background to try to find extra money. From the last time we had spoke to Megan specifically, she was looking, her and her staff are looking for other resources to see that they could tap them. I'm going to call her tomorrow to find out how she's moving forward and to give her an update of where we are with our selection process.
Possibly. Anything from the climate resiliency bond?
That is something that we've also talked to some of our lobbying effort to try to see if there's anything that we can put pressure on from the legislative perspective, because we know that there is money out there for that. So, yes. So yes, we're, we're, we are ramping up to do what is ever necessary to try to get as much as we can.
Hi, Desert Water Agency. Initial groundbreaking, start a construction of the long anticipated one hundred and three million dollar expansion. Possible with a grant from the state water resources control boards, clean water state revolving fund. So just throwing that out there.
Yes, they have been working very diligently, and actually, we sort of both went, I think, phase one, they took, they did a lot of loan, then our project came in with grant, and then they got behind us in the sum of the grants. So yes, we've been following what they do as much as they follow what we do. But yeah, we're, we're continuing to try to find as much money as we can to take care of all of them too.
Thank you. Or maybe all the city.
Yes.
I, I'm just saying, a hundred and three million from the state when we go to and beg DC for four measly million dollars.
I don't, I don't want to necessarily talk out of term, but I know they have been working on that for multiple years, much like we were working on ours for multiple years. I think they, much like us, just happened to be in line at the right time. Danny's actually on their advisor, or customer advisory committee. I don't know if you want to speak to anything, any history to that, or?
Maybe some of your money could roll down, huh?
I believe, I believe MSWD, so I though, I reside in Yucca. Uh, yeah, I've, I've sat on the public advisory committee for that. It's been in the works for, uh, a few years. Uh, they were under a huge time crunch to be shovel-ready. Uh, one of the successes for them is to be able to take their project quickly, put together a project management team, and then bid that project out as a design build. So their delivery system is not your typical design bid build. So they were able to, to take those, those efficiencies and build them into that. And that's how, part of the way is how they made the timeline. Uh, they are struggling through a lot of issues with some of the Joshua Tree requirements, but, uh, they worked through that. Um, I attended the groundbreaking ceremony, ceremony on, on Monday, on that past Monday, so they're excited. They're all over the place as far as construction goes in order to hit the tight schedule to make. They've got four different crews working in different directions, so. You're welcome.
Anything further on groundwater?
No.
We have our consent agenda, which is approval of minutes and the register of demands. Did anyone want to pull either of those to discuss today?
Nope.
Do that Monday. Uh, item eighteen, directors reports, Monday as well. Okay. Item nineteen, general managers report. This is where the fun begins?
Yes, yes, we're fun. Uh, one of Danny's other fun projects, uh, we will be adding, as you mentioned, an agenda item to Monday's project. We talked about this a little bit in our board workshop last week. Uh, in reality, it's taking the six NIM two-point-oh systems down to two NIM two-point-oh, and then a larger RESBCT solar field. Uh, as we talked about, we were not able to bring in the amendment to this particular meeting as a study session, but hopefully the board will allow us to bring that on Monday, knowing that we talked, just recently talked about some of the highlights of the project at our, at our last workshop. So with that being said, you will see that additional item, um, on the agenda as well as we put a copy of the staff report, I believe, on the diary everybody to take with them today for those that you like the hard copy as well, so. Uh, and then the finance and public affairs report will come on Monday as well.
Okay. But what we'll see regarding the solar is, matches what we saw at the workshop. There's not changes since then?
No, it's, it basically the amendment just paring down the project. So there, you'll see two pieces of, two documents there. One is actually changing the contract, and the other one is changing the lease agreement to make sure that they have access to the properties and changing the dimensions slightly. Let me just be very clear, we're not changing the sizes between this workshop or anything else because we've already gone through that. We're going through the sequel process, and we'll bring, be bringing that back to you in October. So the size hasn't changed since we started the public notification, we're starting going through the sequel process. But because we already knew what size it was going to be. This is just formalizing all the discussions we've had over the last four months, roughly, to get from the seven locations to the three locations that we have.
Great. Question?
Just a quick one. The property that we're going to be putting the new stuff on out by our existing solar field, have, has that been graded and stuff yet?
No, that has not been.
Good. Can we reach out to the seed bank for the mountain conservancy, the Joshua Tree, or just through Seabag? Some of the natural habitat species, flora species, they will dig up before and take to the seed bank. We just found out about that in the conservancy meeting today. So if there's anything there, like any of the endangered flora species there, they'll take it and preserve it in their seed bank. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And you said finance and public affairs Monday?
Yes.
Okay. Item twenty, district council comments.
Director, to let you know, we're probably going to take that off future agendas because most of the stuff we're working on is privileged anyway. So, and if we do have something we have to impart to you, we can do it under the general manager's report.
Okay. Item twenty-one, director comments and requests for future agenda items. Director Martin?
No, nothing today.
Director Meyer? That went quick. With that, uh, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.